Good morning, County Council. I would like to call the, to order this council meeting of June 26, 2025. And at this point in time, as you are able, please join us in the standing and singing of O Canada.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts, we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God, keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you please conduct our roll call?
Counselor Mackey, Counselor McKay, Counselor Carlton, Counselor Pringle. Counselor McQueen will be joining us momentarily. Counselor Nielsen, Counselor Patterson, Counselor Dickert, Counselor Kentner, Counselor Keveney, Counselor Body, Counselor Craig, Counselor Noem, Counselor Dobrine, Warden Matrasovs, Counselor Boardingell, Counselor Eccles, and Counselor Hutchinson.
Present.
We have all members and attendants with the exception of Counselor McQueen.
Thank you. Let us begin by respectfully acknowledging that we are gathering on the traditional territory of the Anishinaabe Nation. The people of the three fires known as the Ojibwe, the Odawa, and the Potawatomi nations. And further, we give thanks to the Chipwas of Sogin and the Chipwas of Na'wos, known collectively as the Sogin-Ojibwe Nation, the traditional keepers of our lands and waters since time immemorial. In the south of our county lies the traditional territories of the six nations of the Grand River, Hon de Shone. We are dedicated to honoring Indigenous history and culture and committed to moving forward in the spirit of truth, reconciliation, and friendship with all nations, First Nations, Beeti, and Inuit people. At this point in time, I'll put a call out if there are any declarations of interest for this council agenda. Seeing no hands go up, we will proceed on with the recommendation for the adoption of the minutes, item 6A. It's recommended that the minutes of the county council meeting and the committee of the whole meeting dated June 12, 2025, and the resolutions contained therein be adopted as presented. May I ask for a mover and a seconder? Moved by Counselor Greg, seconded by Counselor Keveney. Any discussion? All those in favor? And that motion is carried. For council this morning, we do not have any closed session matters nor reports, so that allows us to move to number nine, which is the bylaws. So it's recommended that bylaw 523825 and 523925 be introduced and taken as read a first, second, and third time, finally passed, signed by the warden and the clerk, sealed with the seal of the corporation, and engrossed in the bylaw book. 523825, a bylaw to adopt amendment number 26 of the County of Gray official plan affecting lands described as Lot 18, Concession 13, geographic township of Proton, now in the township of Southgate. And 523925, a bylaw to confirm all actions and proceedings of the council. May I ask for a mover and a seconder? Moved by Counselor Nielsen, seconded by Counselor Patterson. Any discussion? All those in favor? That motion is carried. News and celebrations. We have some exciting news, and so to begin with, I will call upon, I'll call Mr. Gibson, manager of housing programs, and Ms. Curry, our homelessness response supervisor, to come forward and join in Director Shaw in some exciting news.
Through you, Warden. Good evening, or good morning. It is my pleasure today to introduce our staff from our short-term shelter program. They're here to give a little synopsis of the successes that they've had for this program. And we just really want to show our celebration and our thanks for all of their hard work. So I'm going to introduce Josh Gibson, our manager of housing programs, and Caitlin Curry, who is our homelessness response supervisor. And they will introduce the rest of the staff.
Thank you very much, and good morning, Warden and County Council. I have a bit of a slide that'll play while I speak, just some photographs that we took at our celebration. Thank you very much. So we were able, I want to start off really with a thank you for County Council for backing this project. You know, this was an out-of-the-box idea when it was presented, and your support made it possible to launch the idea into reality. And then following that, I want to, you know, say thank you to Anne Marie Shaw, our director. She really allows us to run with these ideas, supports them, and drives them, making really big change in our community. So we felt it was really important today to recognize the first year of operations with the new property at 713 Ninth Avenue East and the successes that we've been able to have, and also recognize all the staff that made it possible. This is really hard work that they do on a daily basis, and they do it with such empathy and compassion and grace. And today, I want to welcome and thank the staff. They're all here at the back. Specifically, our two by-name waitlist coordinators, they do the intake for the program. So they're taking those daily calls from people that are looking for service and hearing their stories and their barriers. So that's Riley Vanderburgh, Binguress, and Cheryl Reed. We're also joined by our four case coordinators. They do daily outreach and supports with our participants in the program. They're helping them to address the barriers that they have with housing, visiting encampments, and assisting day-to-day. We have, we are joined by Martina Williamson, Pierre Brunet, Mark Siedehall, and Austin Russell. Our maintenance support staff is led by Corey Barfoot, who unfortunately isn't here today. He really has led all the site improvements to make better the project so that we can really serve our population. And Mary Ann Nicholson, who provides the unit turnovers, making sure that at no point in time does a unit sit empty for the evening. And finally, Gray County's homelessness response supervisor Caitlin Curry. She took this role a few years ago, really hoping to get us on the path to a quality-by-name list and getting on a path to better coordination. The Motel acquisition was a bit of a curveball, but with her past experience, she's really led this team into running with it and really embracing the challenge. So this dedicated group supported over 176 households in 2024 to move from our homelessness by names list into long-term housing. The short-term housing location specifically at 713 welcomed 480 unique individuals across 375 households, including over 50 children under the age of 16 to be supported. And not only were we able to make such a positive impact for the community, thanks to your support, but our operating costs of those nightly stays were reduced by 50% compared to the previous model. So thank you for giving us the opportunity to really thank the staff and show our appreciation, and once again, thank you.
So we do have a plaque to present, and we're wondering, Warden, if you would have some features with staff, that'd be great. Thank you.
Absolutely. We were given this opportunity. The staff are there at the back, at the ready, and this is our opportunity to bring them into the horseshoe and say thank you. I have to say personally that I've been taking a course on impact analysis, and I actually used the example of our motel purchase as a, as an impact for environmental, social, and economic, and, and all the positive effects that have come out of it. And it was actually, everyone in my class is quite interested to see this innovative way in which we've been able to meet all the needs. So thank you for everything that's been going on to make sure that it's been a success. Okay, and we do have another announcement, and this one is coming from our business enterprise coordinator, and I believe online? Yes, okay. So Ms. Catalan is online. There she is. Good morning. And we've had lots of exciting things happening over at the, the campus lately, and you have a special announcement to make.
I do. Thank you so much. So last week, the SEDC and Bruce, the FDC and Hanover hosted the Hawksnusk Competition. And it was such a successful event. They all did an amazing job. Five of the seven finalists that competed and were awarded prizes were from Gray County, which is amazing, because it is a Bruce and Gray initiative. And we just wanted to give a special shout out to one of our summer company students, Wyatt Garen. So he was in our program last year. He started a business called Defy the Odds Basketball, coaching, training, that kind of thing. He came home with the full $10,000 investment, plus the People's Choice Award, which never happens. He was, I guess, the kind of crowd favorite, favorite of the night. You know, he's 18 years old. He's keeping his business going. It's been so successful, and we're just super proud of him. So he's one of our, he's one of our Gray County guys. That's a young entrepreneur, keeping things going, off to school in the fall, but continuing his business.
Excellent. Thank you. Well, I'm going to keep my microphone on so that you can pass on the applause that we're going to have. So congratulations. That is wonderful news. It is so great to hear that when somebody that somehow we are able to jump in and, and help support at a certain moment in somebody's life, especially young people, that then it comes back tenfold, because now they, they feel uplifted. So it feels very good to be that wing, wind underneath the wings. So thank you so much for sharing that.
Thank you.
Okay, so with that, then, I'll put it out to our, our council members, if they have news and celebrations to share from our municipalities. We'll begin with Counselor Carlton.
Thank you, Warden, and good morning, County Council. Canada Day on Tuesday will start at 8:00 AM with yoga on the Big Bay Dock. And at 9 o'clock, we will have raising of the flag and some speeches and singing of O Canada, followed by breakfast back on shore. So we welcome anyone who would like to join us there for that. And then Cabo Beach, starting at 4 o'clock, will have live music on the patio. From 6 to 9, it's Gray Road Revival. We'll be performing on the wedding green. And at 9 o'clock, a bagpipe rendition of O Canada with fireworks show to follow. So everyone's welcome to join us.
Thank you. And other news and celebrations, we'll go to Counselor Kinder.
Thank you very much, Warden Matrasovs. And everybody's familiar with Ramp Magazine. It's a huge asset to our communities, from Simcoe right through to Bruce. And lo and behold, in the 2025 summer edition, Meaford. So I hope you'll grab a copy. They're, they're all over the place. Pick one up and enjoy the article. It's a very, very inspiring article about our great town. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll go to Counselor Keveney.
Thank you, Warden Matrasovs, and good morning, everyone. And I want to talk about a couple of events that are upcoming this weekend. The Major General, Richard Romer, Meaford International Airport, that's a mouthful, will be stomped to Bruce, beginning on Friday afternoon at 4 o'clock and proceeding through Saturday and Sunday from 11 to 4. And this is a festival featuring lots of community and local music talent. So encourage everyone to come out, and I understand the tickets are free, so just come out and support. And our Canada Day begins on the 30th at Anan at the ballpark there, where there will be a barbecue, music, and games. And we carry on then Tuesday with Pancake Breakfast, and that's the Military Family Resource Center and Rotary, starting at 8:00 AM. And that moves to the formal celebration at 11, where the mayor will be speaking, and we'll have our flag raising in O Canada, of course, sung by the Golden Ares, and a Rotary barbecue from 11:30 until 4, and lots of games and activities fun for all. So come on out to Meaford if anybody's looking for anything to do on Tuesday. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And we'll go over to Counselor Nielsen.
Thank you very much, Warden. This weekend, on Saturday, the 28th, we have our Gold Rush in Eugenia. So many moons ago, there was a belief that there was gold in them there hills. Kevin, hold your tone. But they wouldn't find gold. But having a gold rush, you can come. There's panning for gold, beer gardens, live band, lots of family activities. And if you want to come harass me, I'll be doing, being your bartender from 3 o'clock till 7 o'clock.
Thank you. I live in those same hills, and I have yet to find any. And we'll go, I'm going to go online to Counselor Bourne Y'all, and then I'll go over to Counselor Dobrine after that.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and good morning, County Council. I was driving through the other day, and my wife asked me if there's really gold in the hills, and I, I wasn't sure, so I said, check with Dane, and now I know. But in Canada, next Tuesday, Canada Day, of course, in Town of Blue Mountains, all over, ranging from the Village to Thornberry and Clarksburg. We start, of course, at 8:30 AM with the Pancake Breakfast at the Legion. We move into Face Painting. There's a great scavenger hunt organized at the Marsh Antiques. We have a band playing on the street, the Board of Education. The parade leaves sharp at 11:00 AM to, from Clarksburg up into Thornberry. Bands playing all day. And then, of course, Madam Warden, as our mayor, you'll be handing out cupcakes in front of the bakery after the parade. And the Rotary will be having events in the park behind, in the parquet behind downtown. So it'll be just a great day overall with, with the culmination of the parade and then the bands playing. And so everybody, if you're, I know you have your own events, but if you're anybody in town, please join us for Canada Day celebrations in the Town of Blue Mountains.
Thank you. Counselor Dobrine?
Thank you. Good morning, Warden Matrasovs, County Council staff. I, sorry, excuse me, Southgate has a number of events this weekend, as everyone does. Saturday at 4:00 PM is the Show Your Colors Pride Walk. And then on Tuesday, in Dundalk, from noon till 4, is the Junction Community Initiative's Canada Day connects food, fun, and entertainment at the Memorial Park Frank McIntyre Building. And in Holstein, we have a car show from 10 to 1, followed by a barbecue, fireworks, and the Flying Paws Dog Show, all starting at 6 o'clock and going through until dark with the fireworks. So hopefully, we'll see you out if you can. Obviously, we're all busy with our own communities, but we're looking forward to it in Southgate.
Okay, thank you very much. And looking around, any others? Oh, over here, we'll go to, we'll go to Counselor Eccles.
Don't talk about any fool's gold in West Gray. We're going, we are going to ignore Southgate. The West Gray Durham Lions puts on a Durham Loves Canada Day on July the 1st. And from 2 to 4 this year, we have the Mudman playing. And of course, all the other activities and everything culminating in a grand fireworks display at dusk. So it, it'll start, because I do believe there is another one happening with the firefighters from Gray Highlands in our joint community called Priceville, where activities start about 5 o'clock and run through and with culminating in a fireworks display there as well, too. So I will try to get to as many as I can, but Gray County is a big, a big county. If you start at 8 o'clock in Big Bay, you may get to some of the activities by dark. So welcome, everybody, and thank you for all the community groups that put on activities celebrating Canada Day.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, looks like we're good. All right. Thank you very much. So with that, then, that actually concludes the items of business for our council session this morning. So I will look for a motion to adjourn. And it's moved by Counselor Nielsen and seconded by Counselor McKay. All those in favor? And council is adjourned. We'll give a few moments for the technology to switch over for our committee of the whole. Okay, so for our committee of the whole, I'll call to order the committee of the whole of June 26, 2025. And just before I move into the declaration of interest, I'll just note, in order to facilitate doing the final items of business eight and nine, which would be the other business and notices a motion, what we'll do is we'll call those before we go into closed session, just because closed session is a training session, so we don't want people having to wait too long for that. So just keep that in mind, that we'll just reorder those items at the very end of the agenda. At this point in time, I'll put out a call for declarations of interest regarding this agenda. Seeing none, then we'll move on to business arising from the minutes. We don't have anything scheduled. Therefore, we'll go to determination of items requiring separate discussion. So item five is listed. There are eight items in five. So I'll put out a call if there are any of the eight items that a member of the committee of the whole would like to pull for discussion. Okay, seeing nothing online, seeing nothing here in the chamber. So Madam Clerk, we can then proceed on then to the recommended motion. It's recommended that the following consent agenda items be received and that staff be authorized to take actions necessary to give effect to the recommendations in the staff reports and that the correspondence be supported or received for information as recommended in the consent agenda. May I ask for a mover and a seconder? Moved by Counselor Dickert, seconded by the deputy warden. And any discussion? All those in favor? And that motion is carried. Therefore, we'll move on to item six, which is items for discussion. We have two for discussion this morning. Item 6A, first, I'll get a recommended motion on the floor, and then we'll call up Director Shaw. So with that, it's recommended that the County of Gray Community Services Committee meeting minutes dated June 5, 2025 be adopted as presented, and the following resolution contained therein be endorsed. Number one, that report CSR CS1025 regarding the Rockview Fire Fire Restoration Update be received for information. And number two, that report CSR CS1125 regarding Homelessness Prevention Program 2024-2025 Year in Review be received for information. And number three, that CSR CW0925 regarding an update on the Rose Lane redevelopment be received for information. May I ask for a mover and a seconder? So it's moved by Counselor Dobrine and seconded by Counselor, I'll take Counselor Pringle. And with that, we have it on the floor for discussion. Welcome, Director Shaw.
Thank you, Madam Warden. So good morning again, Council. I'm going to provide a little bit of an overview of the Community Services Meeting that was held on June 5. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. Staff provided a year in review of the community services, which consisted of social housing, short-term shelter, early learning, childcare, and Ontario Works. In the community housing, the report spoke to a number of energy-saving programs that staff participated in. We were able to get 500 refrigerators through a Save on Energy program at a worth of about $325,000. Attic insulation for 63 of our, of our units at Victoria Village in Meaford. We had heat pumps and cooling that were also put in at Victoria Village for 63 families, and will lessen their utility bills and will provide energy efficiency, and that was a cost of around $500,000. The report identified many capital and operating projects and spoke to community programs such as children programming, barbecues, and community garden programs that we have throughout our portfolio. The community housing waitlist in 2020 was 1,102. The community housing waitlist in twenty twenty was eleven hundred and two people, and in twenty twenty four, it is now two thousand one hundred and fifty-seven as of December. So it has doubled, practically doubled over the last four years. And normally, about seventy percent of people that are on our waitlist are Gray County residents. Social housing waitlists are open to anyone in the province. Information was shared through our short-term shelter program, which we celebrated earlier today, of our three hundred and seventy-five households that were assisted, which was four hundred and forty-six unique individuals, fifty-four children under the age of sixteen were supported. A hundred and seventy-four households were successfully housed, but we still did have about four point eight households that we turned away because of capacity issues or they did not qualify, and that was during, throughout the year. That was on a weekly basis. Sorry, daily basis. Ontario Works, our caseload is about thirteen hundred and thirty-seven households that are in receipt of assistance. That's an nearly four point seven percent increase over twenty twenty-three. The average household is on Ontario Works for about thirty-three months. Five hundred and seventy-seven households were referred to employment services last year and two hundred and four exited Ontario Works for employment in two thousand and four. Our average case load for our caseworkers is about a hundred to a hundred and ten households. Early learning and childcare noted that there are currently twenty-seven active providers in our home childcare roster. We currently have eleven hundred and sixty families or thirteen hundred and ninety-four children that are paying lower fees at a licensed childcare because of the C-Well program. And the report also spoke to programs available for children through our special needs resourcing, early years mental health programs and early on. And it also reported on the success of our early learning and childcare hub that we have at Sidneyum Campus. There was a report provided for the Rockview Fire Restoration about a year ago. On June fifteenth, we had fired our Rockview Apartments, which is a two-story building comprising of twenty units located at two forty-eight Seventh Avenue in Owen Sound. About seventeen of the twenty units were, had smoke damage and the unit, the unit above it, and unfortunately, our trusses in our attic were also damaged. We did work with our insurance provider for restoration to remove debris, provide smoke and soot removal, water extraction and drying, content restoration for ourselves and for our tenants and the asbestos abatement. All of our tenants have been relocated permanently, and we are looking right now, it was tendered in February, awarded in May, and Winmar is looking at a six-month from July, looking at six months for the restoration to occur. We wanted to look at this as a bit of an opportunity. We're sitting here with a building that is twenty units that is open. So we thought about what we could do, and we would like to, we are going to work with Canadian Mental Health Association in providing supports there. It won't be the same level of supports that we have at Fourteenth Street, but it will be forty hours a week. So someone who is at Fourteenth Street or someone in our motel program or on our waitlist that needs some support with mental health and addictions could go and live there and provide that support on a daily basis. There would be somebody there from Monday to Friday for forty hours a week. So it's another step in the housing in which we need to support all of our individuals. So we're working on that right now and hoping by the new year that that will be up and running, and definitely will provide another update to our Community Services Committee. Our next report that was brought was about our homelessness prevention program. We received funds from the province. We received about three million dollars, three point two million dollars in order to run all of our programs, our homelessness programs and our support programs. To date, we have not received our two thousand and twenty-five allocation, so we're going on assuming that it's going to be the same. The funds allow us our emergency short-term accommodations, in which Josh provided information about earlier. And it also provides us to provide some of that retention and prevention. We know that it's best if people can stay housed. It's a lot less costly to our system and to other social services and health systems, and it's a lot better for the person, too. So through our sustainable housing benefits, we were able to provide seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars for six hundred and ninety-four people last year for last month's rent, utility costs, moving expenses and rental arrears. The funds also provided community outreach supports to Safe and Sound and two-one-one, which provides our after-hour navigators to our individual families experiencing and individuals experiencing homelessness. They handled over nine hundred calls last year for us. Our community enhancement allows us to provide some funds to those agencies that are, that are working to assist people in our community that may be experiencing or at risk of experiencing homelessness. We were able to provide funding to Beaver Valley Outreach, Salvation Army Family and Community Services, the United Way, O Share, Canadian Mental Health Association and Light On Main in meal program in Hanover. Our housing with related supports, we provide funding to five individual, they are for-profit providers. We pay for the individual to be able to stay there, and they provide twenty-four hour support and assistance with medication and daily living skills. Our next report was about our Rose Lane redevelopment. The report provided an update on the progress of the redevelopment. We are looking at a forty-unit affordable housing apartment building to replace the eleven-unit building in Dundalk. We are working with JPM Architectural Inc. for services. As part of our process, Southgate circulated the site plan and the pre-consult, as part of the pre-consultation process to the Grand River Conservation Area. They noted their mapping did not align with our mapping and Southgate's mapping. It, the site is considered a wetland, or part of it is considered a wetland with floodplains marked as hazard. So we are right now working with GEI consultants to provide an environmental impact study, determine the extent and potential hydrological impacts to the wetland. So it could change what we are doing. It may not be a forty-unit building if we can't come to some sort of an agreement. And definitely will put us behind in our timelines, unfortunately. We will continue to work with GEI and Grand Valley Conservation Authority. So we're reporting, we're expecting a report either late July or August, and we will bring an update to the September Community Services Meeting. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for those details. Put it out if there are any questions, and we'll go to councillor Bourne Y'all online.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and through you, just in relation to CSR CS that ten twenty-five, the Rocky Fire Restoration. You touched on it, just the financial aspects in relation to costing for restoration and relocation through insurance or through Gray County budget. Sorry, could you just extrapolate on what was covered fiscally?
Certainly. So we are insured through Marsh Insurance. We belong to the Housing Services Corporation. And the Housing Services Corporation actually provides insurance for all of our social housing within Ontario. And right now, all of our expenses are being covered through insurance, except for the deductible, which was fifty thousand dollars.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you, and we'll go to councillor Eccles next.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and through you to Anne Marie. You said in this project, we were, you're looking at putting a mental health support worker in the building forty hours a week. Is that going to be one of our, is it one of our employees? And what is the, you know, the financial cost of that?
Through you, Madam Morn. So it's actually CMHA. So CMHA has a worker in which they are able to allocate to that building to provide services. We'll provide an office space in the building, so that would be the only cost to us.
Okay, looking around the room, we'll go to councillor Mackey.
Thank you, Warden. Good morning, County Council. That was a great meeting we had, that socialist, there was a lot of information. One thing that impressed me was how your staff in OW are assisting people navigate the system to get the proper assessment so that they can qualify for ODSP. Can you just elaborate for the rest of County Council on what we're doing there, please?
Through you, Madam Morn. So we have a number of people that are on Ontario Works that probably should be on ODSP or Ontario Disability Program. And so we have hired the services of a psychiatrist in order to help us assess and provide the information to ODSP. So our staff are working with people identifying and then making the referral so that someone can have someone to assist them through the process. It's a very onerous process to begin with and does also needs the assistance and of a psychiatrist in order to provide some of that information to ODSP. It's been successful, and the funds that are received through ODSP are a little bit better than Ontario Works. So it's obviously been beneficial for a lot of our clients. It's something that is in our budget annually and is proving to, to be beneficial, definitely.
Okay, thank you, and over to the deputy warden.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Thank you, Anne Marie, for the report. In regards to the Rose Lane project, is this a classic example of a conservation authority not being able to determine between wetland and wet land? Because in Dundalk, we have a lot of wet land, which ultimately could be built on, but my question really surrounds how much impact potentially could it have to the project? Like, are we talking twenty units or how much could it affect? Please, thank you.
Through you, Madam Morn. I really don't have that information yet. That's what the report coming is going to tell us. That is due hopefully the end of July, August. We're hoping that no matter what it is, we'll be able to work something out. Right now, it is considered the area that we're looking at is for parking lot, right? So that's what it is. We're not putting the building on top of there, we're using it for parking, so really hoping that we'll be able to figure things out. It's just time and cost that is, is going to be a little bit more extended.
Okay, anything else? Okay, I'm not seeing any further hands, so I'll call the question. All those in favor? And that motion is carried. Thank you very much, Director Shaw. And item six B, we have, it is recommended that the County of Gray Agricultural Advisory Committee Meeting Minutes dated June fourth, twenty twenty-five be adopted as presented and the following resolution contained therein be endorsed. May ask for a mover. Thank you. Moved by councillor McQueen, seconder, seconded by councillor Eccles, so it's now on the floor for discussion, and good morning, Director Taylor.
Great, good morning, good morning, Madam Warden and members of council. Well, certainly not a competition. We had a Grade A Cultural Advisory Committee meeting, too. I'm sure Community Services was good as well. So the, the meeting started with actually an introduction to our newest member of the committee, Chris Strut. Chris joins us after the vacancy of Hugh Simpson, who left the committee because he had moved away from Gray County. So it was great to have a new face on the committee, and we did a round of introductions for, for everyone there. Next, we had a great deputation from Emily from Gray Egg Services, who was giving us an update on the six projects participating this year in the Experimental Acres Program. Council may recall that this program started as a pilot in, in twenty twenty-three and has now run into twenty-four and twenty-five. With respect to the six projects, they range in, in size and type from, from very small farm operations all the way up to two hundred and thirty acres. I'll also note that there was a good geographic distribution across the county of the six projects. And while I won't go into detail on any of the projects, because it's definitely beyond my level of expertise, I will just profile who those projects are and where they are. So first, we had their Ramial Mulch and Ramial Mulch Around Fruit Trees by Anthony Rabado and Southgate. We also had Forest Trails for Strip Grazing by Joshua Abai in Meaford. We had Overseeding Turnup to Extend Fall Grazing by Peter Kotzev and Hanover. We had Late Summer Seeding Hay by Wade Deacon in West Gray, and we had the Creation of Apple Gilds by Christina Allen in Meaford. We also heard on the Experimental Acres Program by Megan Miles, the county's climate change coordinator for outreach and engagement. And she talked about the positive outcomes of, of Experimental Acres and, and assisting in meeting the county's own climate actions in this regard, as well as the very positive collaboration with Gray Egg Services, which we always look forward to. And, and she also gave us some background on, on how the projects were selected this year. Following the, the deputation, we had, I'm going to say some exciting updates from planning. We, we talked about the recent review of the Beaver and Coyote Bylaw programs, as well as the Forest Management Bylaw. We spoke to the, the open house that was co-hosted at Gray Agricultural Services. And then we spoke to the public meetings that we had in, in this very council chambers in early May, where, where we heard from a number of people. Staff give a quick summary of, of the feedback heard to date, and, and as you can probably imagine, the feedback was varied. We definitely heard some positive feedback and, and we heard some constructive comments that staff need to go back and consider. So with that, sort of the update was that staff are going to review all the feedback that's received. We've got some further research to do, probably reaching out to a few other organizations before we bring anything back for, for council's consideration in that regard. Staff also gave an update on Official Plan Amendment number twenty-three, the Rural Permitted Uses and Development Policies update. Council will recall that this amendment has, has now been approved and it's in force and effect. There were some questions from some of the committee members on OPA twenty-three. Some of the questions more specifically related to the proposed Thornbury Acres development in, in town of Blue Mountains. That development is not subject to OPA twenty-three because it preceded OPA twenty-three and also based on a site-specific exception to consider Thornbury Acres in that amendment. But because the Agricultural Advisory Committee had, had given feedback early on in the process for Official Plan Amendment number twenty-three, we wanted to close that loop and, and kind of give them the end of the story, if you will. Following that, we had, what's, what's usually the most exciting part of the meeting is, is the roundtable and sector update, where our committee members get to share their thoughts on, on the good and the bad and, and everything else that's happening around the county and their various sectors. We certainly heard some comments about the impacts on agriculture with respect to this winter or early spring's ice storm that hit parts of the county very hard. We also had an exciting update on the recent announcement from the province as part of the budget that's, that Ontario is cutting the tax on cider producers. So it's going from just over sixty percent to thirty-two percent, and this brings it more in lines with the taxes that are on, on craft beer and, and taking it out of the, the rates that were previously applied to cider and imported wine in that regard. Following that, there were some questions on some transportation services programs. So CEO Schertzr gave an update on the county's Living Snow Fence program, where he noted that we're going to explore some options there to try to increase the uptake and make sure that the program is, is working well for, for the farm community in that regard, but also serving purposes with respect to sheltering our county roads from, from snowdrifting and, and aiding, again, in our climate change goal, climate change goals. And then we had some questions about controlling wild chervil. And, and Mr. Schertzr noted that we're going to continue to explore options, but one of the significant issues with respect to chervil is even if we control it on our county road allowances and our county road allowance, our county-owned lands, then we still have the privately-owned lands across the county, and that is creating a significant challenge in that regard. Finally, following the, the roundtable, CEO Schertzr gave an update on the county transportation construction plans for, for twenty twenty-five. There was a map showed. He noted that all that information is, of course, posted on, on the county's website, but also on Municipal five, five-one-one for, for reference purposes. So keeping the agricultural community up to date with these construction programs is critical to ensuring that any projects cause, cause minimal disruption to, to farmers in that regard. So that, in a nutshell, was, was the, the highlights of the meeting we had on, on June the fourth, but certainly be happy to take any questions if there are any.
Okay, thank you very much. So we'll put it out. For questions, we'll go to councillor Mackey.
Thank you, Warden. Not a question, but I just wanted for the record to indicate that I wasn't at that meeting, even though it says I was in attendance. So that's why I wasn't able to comment on how great the Agricultural Advisory Committee meeting was. So, thank you.
I thought it was going to be a comment on how early Director Taylor is presenting this morning, not ahead of lunch for a change. Anything else? We'll go to councillor Eccles.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Wondered if it would be possible, maybe for the egg committee, just as a recommendation, that you try and figure out what time. I noticed that was the introduction problem, probably because there seemed to be people coming and going and moving. Everybody doesn't attend at the same time to that meeting. Must be a lot to do with farmers out on the land or something of that nature. My question is, do we have a county weed inspector?
We do. If it goes much beyond that, I might defer to Pat. Our county weed inspector, my understanding, is, is Mark Cronin, who also pulls double duties with the sign shop. But if there's further questions, I might defer to Pat there.
I guess the further question would be, is that not what our weed inspector, when you're, you know, speaking about wild chervil being an invasive species and being on private land and whatnot? My understanding and the way that the weed inspector My understanding and the way that the weed inspector operates, is that to coordinate that, to try and control this continuous spread of wild turbot? You know, we've had a number of other invasive species, purple loosestrife, fragmities, thank you, Barb. And, you know, is that? I always understood that's kind of what the weed inspector was there for, was to try and help the community mitigate the detrimental effects of these weeds. I'm looking at Pat. I'm not sure whether he wants to jump in or not.
Yeah, so just briefly, Mark is our weed inspector. And this issue does come up quite frequently in that, you know, we have our own responsibilities under the Invasive Species Act. But we can't really spray on private land. We can issue an order. But some of the materials we use can't be sprayed on private land. So we are going to more detail this kind of offline, but it is an issue that, you know, we don't go across every property in the county and try to stop invasive species. But generally, we're working within our confined areas to try to stop the spread.
Thank you. Just further to 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 Pat's comments. With respect to some of the challenges, as as Pat indicated in terms of the private landers, we do work with our communication staff in terms of trying to create some education awareness around how we how to control wild turbot. There are some challenges, as Pat indicated, in terms of what's available to farmers versus what's available to the county municipalities to help eradicate wild turbot. And part of the question, I think, was from the Ag Advisory Committee was what further can be done? So I think part of it would be having some further discussions with maybe having Mark attend as well as Pat attend one of our future Agriculture Advisor Committee meetings, just to have a discussion with with the the committee about what could be looked at further in terms of just raising some of that education awareness around this particular topic matter.
Okay, thank you. And we're going to go online to Councillor Bourdignan.
Thank you and good morning again, County Council. Through the Warden, first a comment about the cider. This is a huge win and I appreciate the help from Gray County. This has been something we've worked on for about six years at the local council table and a drop of almost half price on the taxation for cider. It's just a huge win for our local cider producers, not just in TBM, but throughout the region and throughout the province for that matter. But I did have a question for Director Taylor, because we do have a notice of motion coming forth through at the local table in regards to the Beaver and Coyote Bylaw. Can Director Taylor, can you just expand on what the responsibilities of the upper tier and the lower tier are when it comes to beaver and coyote management? As we, as at our next meeting, we will be seeing a notice of motion from one of our local councillors. So I'd just like to get that definition I can bring back to the local table.
Sure, through you, Madam Warden. Thank you for your question, Councillor Bourdignan. I'll give you a relatively brief response now, but if it helps, maybe I can forward you an email with some of the past staff reports and maybe that will help clarify in that regard. So with respect to the the current beaver program, licensed trappers are eligible to receive the bounty for trapping beavers. The municipal role in that is is sort of as gruesome as it sounds, to collect the tails and certify that that the beavers were presented to to the municipality in that regard. And then paperwork is forwarded on to the county. We review and we pay out directly to the trappers. With respect to the Coyote and Wolf Program, again, the municipality is on that front line in terms of, in this case, collecting the ears to certify that the coyotes were properly trapped. It's a little bit different with the Coyote Program, because the Coyote trapping is only eligible when there's been an attack on livestock. So there's also the role of the livestock evaluator in that case. But again, once that's certified, that yes, there was an attack on livestock, the ears have been presented to to the municipality, then the form comes up to the county and it's paid. One of the things we talked about in the earlier staff report is that neither of these programs are legislatively required of the county. We've heard from the agricultural community that that they're definitely appreciated and on the beaver side, they're also maybe appreciated in terms of helping local infrastructure and not flooding out lands. But the county isn't isn't required to offer these services. Some counties do and some counties don't, but what we've been hearing is that's a bit of a declining thing. So part of the feedback that we're getting is is along the lines of the agricultural community saying that, yeah, this is absolutely essential. We need this to continue on. But we've also heard from others that that have given alternative points of view to suggest that maybe this isn't a business the county should be in. And maybe there's other non-lethal ways of controlling both beavers and coyotes that might be more beneficial in the long term in that regard. So if it works for you, Councillor Bourdignan, certainly happy to forward you on those past staff reports and more than happy to take this discussion offline if there's any further questions or if there's anything we can do to support the town in in addressing that notice of motion. More than happy to do so.
Through the Warden, thank you, Director Taylor. And just for clarification, the municipality would be governed under the the bylaw set that's in place with the with the region. Is that correct? Operationally, when it comes to the I guess the trappings and the proof and the things like that?
Through you, Madam Warden. Certainly, under the under the current bylaw, the two current bylaws for both the beavers and the coyotes and wolves, the the process is that it comes first to the municipality, then up to the county. I suppose if there was an appetite from County Council to explore an alternate approach, we definitely have to chat further with with legal services to make sure that that's all good from a legal perspective. But the current the current bylaw has has things going to the municipality first and then the county, the current bylaw.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Councillor Mackey.
Thank you, Warden. And just to follow up on Councillor Eccles' comments around the wild turbot. Councillor Eccles did mention to or asked out the question yesterday in the Budget and Finance Committee about the finances available for for weed control. And we don't have that much in the budget, not nearly as much as what we we may need to have. My limited knowledge on, you know, weed inspectors, if there's a complaint from an agricultural landowner about adjacent properties with weeds, there is a responsibility that those weeds are eliminated. So I guess my question is, what is the liability for the county with the expansive amount of trails that we have that are adjacent to agricultural properties? And if requests are made to get rid of that noxious weed, where does that leave us? So I appreciate the more information's coming back, but that may be a consideration that we need to look at because I'm hearing more and more from the agricultural community about the the issues along the sides of the roads and and properties that belong to municipalities. Thank you.
Through you, Madam Warden. Thank you for your question and comment, Councillor Mackey. We might need to take that back as as feedback. I'm certainly not qualified to to comment on the liability in that regard, but that's certainly something as a staff we can look into further and chat with our own legal services staff in that regard. But thank you for raising that.
Okay, any further questions? Looking around, not seeing any hands up. Okay, then thank you very much, Director Taylor. So at this point in time, I'll call the question. All those in favor? And that motion is carried. Thank you. So we now will just jump down briefly down to items eight and nine before returning to item seven. So number eight is other business. Any other business? Okay, not seen anything. And I'll put out a call for notices of motion. Are there any notices of motion to serve today? And again, seeing no hands go up. In that case, then, we'll move to item seven, which is closed meeting matters. And it's recommended that the committee, the whole, does now go into closed session pursuant to Section 239, 3.1, for the purpose of educating or training members on the code of conduct matters. May ask for a mover. Moved by Councillor Greg? And and seconded? Oh, just a question not moving yet? Okay. Let me look for, let me get the motion on the floor and then I'll ask questions. So it's moved by Councillor Carlton, seconded, seconded by Councillor Patterson. It's now on the floor for discussion. Councillor Greg.
I would like a recorded vote on this, please. I'm not convinced that this training should be held in closed. There's the opportunity if something should arise during the conversation that we can consider going into closed at that time, but just in the to view it as us operating in a transparent manner. I don't believe this justifies us going into closed. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk, this has been, the request is for a recorded vote.
You, and this is to move to proceed in camera. So Councillor Mackey. Opposed, Councillor McKay. Opposed, Councillor Carlton. In favor, Councillor Pringle. Opposed, Councillor McQueen. Opposed, Councillor Nielsen. In favor, Councillor Patterson. In favor, Councillor Dickert. Opposed, Councillor Kenner. In favor, Councillor Keating. In favor, Councillor Body. Opposed, Councillor Greg. Opposed, Councillor Milne. In favor, Councillor Dobrine. Opposed, Warden Matrasovs. In favor, Councillor Bourdignan.
In favor.
In favor, Councillor Eccles. Opposed, Councillor Hutchinson.
Opposed.
Opposed. That motion is carried, 50 to 46.
Okay, sorry, there was a request for clarification on the voting result, Madam Clerk.
The motion to proceed in camera was carried, 50 in favor, 46 in opposition.
50 in favor, 46 in opposition. Is there any further question? Councillor Eccles.
On a recorded vote in in committee as a whole, is it done on a weighted portion or just a straight?
So with Gray County's procedure by law, both committee and committee as a whole and councillor, our recorded votes are weighted.
Any further questions? Okay, so we have voted then to go into closed session. And we will come out with a reporting out statement afterwards. And that is the remaining item that rests on our agenda, other than adjournment when we return. Yes, Councillor Dobrine.
Thank you, Warden. Could we have a brief recess before proceeding into the training?
Yes, thank you for the reminder. That's an excellent idea. So we'll make sure that we are now, we have voted to go into closed session. We'll call a break. Madam Clerk, 10 minutes, is that okay? Okay, so 10 minutes. So if we were, we are to reconvene at 11:10. Thank you. And and the training will be in the